Coming to you from a cozy little condo, high atop old Fourth Ward, Atlanta. Welcome to the Ron Show on America One Radio. Here's your host, Ron Roberts.
Dip down to the first floor of my building to have a little in-show experience at Condesa Coffee. And I want to thank Anthony and the staff at Condesa again for taking care of us. We are going to do a little series of one-on-ones with city council candidates running here in the city of Atlanta. It's 2025, which is an off-cycle for most statewide and federal races, obviously. But it's still an important election year. We've talked a little bit about the Public Service Commission races that are happening statewide in the state of Georgia. Patty Duran on last week. We had an in-depth conversation about that. So I encourage you to go back and take a listen to that and weigh in on your Public Service Commission candidates when you get the chance to primaries and statewide. And here in the city of Atlanta, we have city council seats that are coming up for election. And I'm scrolling through my social media one day and I see someone I know, someone that I've actually worked with. You and I have been on a board together. So I'm going to go ahead and warn those city councilmen a little bit about what lies ahead if my friend, Matt Rinker, becomes city councilman for the city of Atlanta. Thanks for joining me this morning, man. How are you?
Thanks for having me. I have really been a fan of the show. I listen to it each evening. And honestly, that the episode you did on the PSC races was really informative. So again, if you haven't listened to it, go back and listen to it because it was great.
She's bright. She's very bright. And Georgiautilitywatch.org is the website to dive into a lot of what she had to say there. So you're running for city council. You're running against Julian Michael Bond, who by the way, full transparency, has been offered an opportunity to come on this same show, this same experience. I'll do it at Condesa. Wherever he needs to do it, we'll do it. So we look forward to hearing from Michael Julian Bond on that. You decided you wanted to run for city council. Why?
I was frustrated. Like so many people in this city, we've watched as big projects, big aspirational projects that will transform this city. The voters and the residents go for it and vote for tax increases and all these things. And just to have our leadership on city council and the mayor's offices push it down the road because they don't want it to be on their watch. And so that was one of the things. The other thing is just, I was frustrated to watch communities get ignored when projects come through. You know, we watch time and time again where neighborhoods get outraged. They're filling city council chambers and it doesn't matter. And I'm sick of that. I lead a neighborhood, a really small neighborhood in southeast Atlanta called Peoplestown. And we've watched time and time again as projects come through the southeast corridor of the city, and we don't have true community engagement. So that was kind of the two biggest reasons, you know, frustration and, and you know, just tired of watching our communities get ignored.
It sounds to me like, and just tell me if I'm just reading the tea leaves wrong or whatnot. It sounds to me like, in specific, I think the most recent kick the can down the road big project item would be East Side Beltline rail. That seems to be hitting the nail on the head with what you were talking about there.
Yeah, I've been a strong proponent of the Beltline ever since it was first envisioned, as have many of the, you know, residents of the city. And it's getting kicked down the road one more time. And it is sick. You know, we've, we've had this proposal for over 20 years now, and we're nowhere closer to building a true transit-connected corridor than we were 20 years ago when it was a thesis. And it's time for leadership on our city council to take the bull by the horns and run with it. I am a strong believer that rail has to be on the Beltline throughout the city. How you do that is different. You know, you can do it multimodal, but you know, the mayor and his advisor Courtney English, who just presented to MARTA, said, yeah, we want to take the, take the streetcar to the Beltline, but not on the Beltline. And instead, we want to shift it to southeast corridor, the southwest, southeast trail. I live on the southeast trail. It's not ready for it. We haven't had the studies for it.
Oh, yeah. The impact studies.
Yeah, we're nowhere near that. So that's another 10 to 15 years down the road when we could be putting rail right now to connect people through downtown over to, you know, the Highlands. Right now, his proposal doesn't connect people. If you're saying you want to build rail from Murphy's Crossing to Glenwood, what then? How does somebody get onto a MARTA train or a MARTA bus rapid transit? The only connection point for that is in Peoplestown, which is at Milton Avenue right now is proposed. They haven't even finalized where these rail stops are going to be. So for somebody to get from that Beltline rail to the BRT line that's being built, they'd have to get off the rail, walk five blocks to a BRT station. People can't do that. So we're still going to be relying on cars. We've got to get people off our interstates and off our streets and into different methods. So that's my, one of my hot buttons. I'm glad you brought it up first. But rail on the Beltline is something that has to be done. It's, it's an opportunity builder. It's an equity builder. So people in southeast, southwest Atlanta can get to Buckhead to a job. So that mom that's working a job at a hotel in Buckhead can also get to her night job where she's clerking at a grocery store. So it's a true way that we can connect our city.
Full transparency, you know, last year, well, for a lot of folks who work as you and I both have in real estate, last year was a really tough year to get a lot of work done unless you're one of the big boys or girls in the, in the business. And so, you know, I did a little rideshare from time to time. And it became beyond readily transparent then that the folks that I'm picking up and taking to and from their various things, in a lot of cases, it was seniors and their doctor's visits, that there is a huge lack of, you know, ready-made transportation for them outside of having an app. And I can't tell you how many times it would be their kid or their grandkid who's ordering the ride for them because they, you know, they don't have the wherewithal to do that. Whereas having, you know, a steady, sturdy mass transit grid, and listen, MARTA's made its mistakes and had its shortcomings. We all know that the inflation has impacted what that pot of kettle, that pot of money looks like and what it can do. But the, the lack of mass transit in metro Atlanta for a city and metro area of its size is pretty alarming.
Yeah. Yeah. We want to be a city of the future. We want to be, you know, world-class city, but we have second-rate transit. And that's not going to help us succeed. It's not going to help us grow as a city. We, we keep hearing our leadership say, we're investing to bring this Fortune 500 company here or this, you know, corporate headquarters here. They won't keep coming if we don't have a way for their employees to get to the office, to get to and from their kids' soccer games, all these kinds of things. And you mentioned, you know, people being reliant on rideshare. That's if you can afford it.
Yeah.
They're about to cut bus lines throughout the city in the effort to make it more efficient. But there are so many seniors who rely on that. And it's going away for a lot of them. So they're going to have to walk further to a bus stop.
Yeah. And the word efficient to me doesn't mean, you know, just cost savings. Efficient means still able to do the job at a cost savings. And if you're reducing the ability to do the job just for the cost savings, well, you're just, you're just cutting service.
Yeah, absolutely. And as a listener of your show, I, you, you played the clip from Courtney English, Mayor Dickens', policy advisor, when he was presenting to the MARTA board, talking about a 15-minute city, right? We do not have a 15-minute city. We have an hour city. Whether you're trying to get from Atlantic Station down to southwest Atlanta to cut, you know, to get home at night, you're taking 45 minutes at least because we're relying on the interstate system. So, you know, transit is one of my biggest things. And it's not just rail on the Beltline, right? It's also sidewalks, making sure that when people do walk, which is rare in Atlanta sadly, they can get from point A to point B. Our sidewalk infrastructure is at the billions of needing repairs.
Wow.
We can't make that dent all at one time, but we can chip away at it little by little. You know, and then also protected bike lanes so people can hop on their bike, hop on a scooter and feel safe. You know, I watched on my way here this morning, I watched a person on a bike, biking up Boulevard from Edgewood and almost get hit by a car because it was swerving to go around another one. You know, we have to find ways to make trails and bike lanes protected so that people can use those as methods of transportation.
I was thinking too, you know, we're just blocks from the, from former Wellstar Hospital. There's a huge development that, you know, we, I love renderings. Everybody loves renderings. Renderings really move the needle, right? The renderings look nice. I'm looking through it. I'm scour, I'm just scouring. I'm really deep diving into it. And I don't see the first thing that says, we're planning for transit here. Do you believe that there should be some sort of a carve-out anytime, some sort of big development like that? You mentioned Atlantic Station. Why there's not some sort of carve-out in Atlantic Station long ago when they developed that for mass transit to arrive there at some point? Should that be mandated for developments like that?
I firmly believe it. And full transparency, aside from selling real estate, I work in the real estate development, apartment management industry.
Okay.
I believe that there should be some infrastructure set up when we do these massive projects. The Civic Center site, which has been a long-stalled project, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, so.
The renderings though, the renderings on the fence look really hard.
And we, Atlanta, we like to throw out these renderings of pretty things and go after the shiny object, but we don't fulfill the promise. And so, yes, absolutely. To answer your question, we need to be building infrastructure when we build development to be able to expand. We may never do it. But, and I'm not saying put a price tag in there that's so investment-heavy for the developer not to be able to get the project done, but just the basics, you know, whether it's bus turnaround lanes or, you know, coves to get in and out, little things. We can do a lot of things to make it more transit, more public transit-friendly.
You're running for an out-large, an at-large position. Atlanta's a majority-minority city. How do you break through the unspoken barrier? That is an unspoken barrier, but I mean.
Absolutely. You see it in every election, right?
You have to knock on doors and.
Yeah. Yeah. I think when you sit down and you talk with residents, whether north of I-20 or south of I-20, because that's a lot of, a lot of times where our dividing line happens to be.
As the mayor mentioned.
Yeah. You sit down and you talk with those residents in southwest Atlanta or, you know, Thomasville Heights, they have the same issues that people in Buckhead or in Morningside have. The city is not delivering on the full promise that they offer. There's so many times that I've heard these same conversations and it, you could sit two people down from very different neighborhoods and hear the same problems. Services are not being done properly. We're too much corruption in the city. All these things that just pile up that we need to change. And again, it goes back to transportation and equitability. If you have ability for somebody, whatever neighborhood they live in, to get to where they need to go reliably, where they're not relying on a rideshare program or something like that, and sorry to arm all the Uber drivers out there that I'm saying, hey, let's put them out of business. But that is the core issue. So that's how you break through. And, you know, obviously, it's getting that message out to, to, you know, neighborhoods that are normally going to go out and vote to make sure that we get them.
Yeah. The thing that sort of struck me in the, the Beltline rail pitch that the mayor and Courtney English gave to MARTA was the, they really sort of leaned in on the this side versus that side argument.
Hundred percent.
Instead of trying to have some kind of a unifying message, I really felt like it was an us-versus-them conversation. And I don't know, I guess, I guess I'm a gentrifier in some respects because I'm a white person that moved into the city in 2018. But, you know, I do, I've done this show for two and a half years. I have, you know, community leaders of all shapes and stripes and sizes on. And, you know, the message should be one of unifying the city versus, well, we're going to take care of these folks first, when in actuality, all you're doing is kicking the can down the road and only going to disappoint them 20, 30 years down the road anyway.
And haven't talked to them yet, right?
Yeah.
So this announcement came out of the blue. The mayor and nobody from his office, nobody from MARTA has been to the southeast trail to talk to those communities. I'm president of the Peoplestown Neighborhood Association. Not a comment. Multiple stops would be coming through our neighborhood. Grant Park, same conversation. They, it was out of the blue for us too. We absolutely, I'm going to speak for myself, I should say.
All right.
I am an absolute proponent. I want to see rail down there.
Yeah.
I don't want to see it first.
Yeah.
Because we're not ready for it. We're ready for rail elsewhere. We need to do that. And it's, you know, it's funny that, you know, the, the mayor talks about how, you know, community engagement is key to him. And I was a big fan of Andre Dickens. I've served on his advisory boards.
That's right. You're on the LGBTQ council, right?
I was, I was. I want to be that council member that will fight for him when he has a project that's going to do right by the city. But I'll also fight back against him when it's not one, or when there hasn't been community engagement. And, you know, to draw a contrast to, to Michael Bond, who I'm running against, he's a reliable yes vote for any mayor in office. There's a reason right now that in a couple of weeks, they're going to have a fundraiser with five mayors of Atlanta hosting him for him because he's a reliable yes vote. He doesn't rock the boat. And so my point is, if you want somebody that'll just go along to get along, he's your man. If you want somebody who's going to speak up and change, and you know my time serving on boards with you, I will speak up. And, and, you know, but first, I think it's important to be involved and be in the neighborhoods, listen, and then act. And it's, there are going to be times where people disagree with my stance on things, and that's 100% okay. That's, that's the great thing about our government, right, is you can disagree. But my goal will always to be what's the best for the neighborhood and what's the best for the city.
We're with Matt Rinker, who's running for the city council at-large position. The incumbent, Michael Julian Bond, up for reelection. And we're going to continue this conversation. We'll talk a little bit about like some of the, the experience that you and I have had on this board and, and some of the conclusions I can draw from that in just a few. It's the Ron Show, America One Radio, progressive voices via tune-in or wherever you podcast from Condesa Coffee this morning. You can follow the Ron Show on your preferred social media platforms. That would be @ronshowatl, Substack, Instagram, Twitter, X, Facebook, Threads, Blue Sky. I think I covered them all. By the way, Matt Rinker joining us, running for city council at-large. You got socia's for your campaign?
I do. It's MattForAtlanta.
MattForAtlanta.
On any of the platforms.
Nobody else had had that?
Surprisingly, no. You know, you would think over the years, especially since we have had elected officials who are named Matt, you would think somebody would have snagged that one up. But yeah, we have MattForAtlanta, MattForATL.
All right.
You can go either way. And that's our website as well.
All right. Let's do a little bio on you, since I've only got a short break here real quick. Tell us a little bit about yourself, where you grew up, how you got here, what you've been doing since you've been in Atlanta, yada, yada, yada.
Yeah, absolutely. So I grew up in a working-class family in, in a small town outside of, in northern Virginia. My dad was a Steamfitter Union member, my mom a public schools teacher. I went to public schools my entire life. I'm a big advocate for public school, especially trade schools. And, you know, went to public university, Longwood University, in a metropolis called Farmville, Virginia. So a small town, and then moved down here in 2004. And like so many people, I, I was coming for an opportunity. I got a job offer and Atlanta sounded exciting. So I moved down here and have been in, you know, a variety of different neighborhoods, but ended up being homeowner for my first home in East Atlanta, and have loved the southeast side of the city for, for as long as I could remember.
East Atlanta Village is something special, man.
It's something else, right? So but I've, you know, I've lived in Buckhead, I've lived in Lindbergh, Midtown, Virginia Highlands, even the west side. And, and so, you know, my background, I started getting involved locally and just kind of progressed and progressed. And now I've been a very active member of the MPU system. And I've served as, on the board of the Peoplestown Neighborhood Association for the past four years and in the past two years as president. You know, I've always been a big believer in civic engagement. It's funny, and I've made the joke a couple of times that Michael Bond and I have one thing in common. In 1993, we were both running for council. He was running for his first year on city council and I was running for student council in high school.
I knew you were going to say that.
So yeah, it's, you know, it gets a chuckle every time. But, you know, it just shows that, that disparity between us. As somebody who's been entitled to a seat for, you know, the one he's in for over 20 years, and then somebody who's ready to bring fresh ideas.
Man, I can't even do the softball bio without you coming in on your, your incumbent. But speaking of, speaking of softball, though, you and I have worked on the Hotland Softball League Board for a few years. And you dipped out. Is this why you dipped out? Like, go ahead and tell me now. Is that, is that why you decided, I'm done? I didn't want to do this anymore?
I was strong-armed into my last time I ran for the board of the softball league. I'd been on the board previously. And it does a lot of great things. And it's enriched my life immensely.
Oh, yeah.
It really gave me a sense of connection.
Saved my life, I would say.
Yeah. Yeah, same. You know, I moved here in '04, like I said, and I started playing softball in 2007. And it was a way for me to actually meet people and get connected to the city. And that's kind of what started all of it. You know, I had somebody push me and say, hey, run for the board. And so I ran for secretary and, and it just kind of grew from there. And then when I took some time away from the board and came back and got pushed back into it, and I said, I'm only doing it one term. That's it.
Yeah, that's what I say all the time.
And I, you know, really stepped up in the neighborhood as well in Peoplestown. You know, I'm very active with the Peoplestown Revitalization Corporation and the Peoplestown Neighborhood Association and our MPU. And so, time constraints, you know, and I, like you, I've played on a team, managed a team on the board, and it wears you out after a while. So I took a step back and decided to fill my time with this instead.
So we talked a little about going door-to-door and campaigning. You're up against a fundraising juggernaut. How do, how do you combat that?
You know, it's really about strategy and smart and, you know, without going in.
Efficiency maybe.
You would, I mean, surprising, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's going to be a low-turnout election. This is the first election barring some miracle person jumping in the race for mayor. This is the first election since 2013. We won't have a contested mayoral race.
Yeah.
So turnout's going to be low inevitably. So it's really targeting in on those voters who are going to come out and vote. And, and making sure we touch them, you know, get out and talk to them, get out and call them, get in their neighborhoods, that kind of thing. So yeah, it's, fundraising is a huge part of it. I would love anybody who wants to help get the message out to go to mattforatlanta.com and make a donation because sadly, money does still run elections.
Yeah. So let me give you 45 seconds to answer this question. You're going up against the daunting monetary task. Do you think that that's what might be keeping folks on the sidelines from running for the mayor's office this go-round?
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, you know, and Mayor Dickens has done a lot of good things for the city. I'm not going to take anything away from him for that. He's got a war chest right now, probably around $2 million. So it's going to be tough for somebody to jump in. And that's not to take away from any of the people who have put their name in, because you can get your name out there. And there's, there's an anti, you know, Andre vote out there. I don't know how big it is. Atlanta's not a city to vote the bums out, kind of, you know, we, we have a.
Historically, no, you're right.
I don't think we've ever done it since we've had our new mayoral system. So, you know, I think that's going to keep this, our race, as one of the key primary races in the city.
So there's a story that came out in the Atlanta Journal-Constitution, city council getting back into session, and they're faced with a $20 million deficit to address. I'm going to ask you a little bit about that when we return. We're with Matt Rinker, running for city council at-large here in the city of Atlanta. It's the Ron Show on America One Radio, progressive voices via tune-in or wherever you podcast. And thanks to Condesa Coffee for hosting us this morning. We're coming to you from Condesa Coffee at the corner of Freedom Parkway and Boulevard in Old Fourth Ward. Normally, I'm tucked away in the corner of my living room, trying to keep quiet so I don't wake the neighbors, but, you know, raise a little sting for you each weekday. But I decided to come down to Condesa Coffee. My friend is running for city council, and we're going to do a series of these. We've invited his opponent on as well. No response yet, but maybe we'll get one. Michael Julian Bond will be running for reelection, and he's going to be up against Matt Rinker, who's running for the at-large position on Atlanta City Council. Again, thanks for joining me this morning.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
So the AJC article this morning, I saw, $20 million shortfall. And I'm just going off the top of my head. I'm not going to pull it up on my phone. It's, if I remember correctly, the shortfall is being pinned on overtime pay for public safety.
Yeah.
What they're not saying is that overtime pay for public safety is to keep the Atlanta Public Safety Training Facility. This is what's so ironic about it. The Atlanta Public Safety Training Facility construction site under Watch 24/7.
Correct.
To me, there's just something kind of ironic about that. But nonetheless, that project came in over budget in and of itself. A lot of money went to that. And this, to me, speaks to a lot of the monetary issues that are embedded in our politics today, where the mayor loves to answer to big checkbooks. The east side, we talked about the East Side Beltline rail. I think he's listening to businesses a lot more than residents in that regard as well. And their shortsightedness is, you know, to me.
In fairness on that, though, there are a lot of residents.
Oh, I know.
Who don't want the rail there either.
No, you're right. There is a lot. Well, it's, it's, it's the changing face. It's the NIMBYism that has come in since the passage of the MARTA, the more MARTA tax and the money that was going to go to that, that has changed that tune a little bit. I think it's, I think it's probably a little bit more 55, 45, you know, pro. But still, I, I, I think he seems to be more moved by, and council too, to be fair.
Without a doubt.
More moved by monetary might than residential outreach.
Yeah. You know, and it goes back to that money is the catalyst for getting elected. You know, so if, if you do something that cuts off your revenue stream to get you reelected, that, that's not a good thing. And, and that's not just here locally. That's nationwide.
But I mean, historically, incumbency is good for you if you're, if you're running for reelection in Atlanta. You would think you would be insulated from that a little bit and be able to be a little bit more.
Not if you have higher aspirations after that.
Okay. Okay. I would, well, okay. I would, I would argue in one case, I think that's a, I think that's a dead-end street.
Yeah.
But, you know, we'll, we'll not go there. So the, the budget shortfall, they're, they're talking hard decisions. They're talking layoffs. They're talking hiring freezes, this, that, and the other. Is that, and with, with things the way they are in Washington right now, in federal dollars, you don't know what you're getting, if you're getting it, or if it's being rescinded. What is the smart play, you think?
Yeah. I mean, it's starting at hiring freezes, you know, which stinks because there are so many services that you talk to the actual worker doing the work for those services in the city, and they're short-staffed already. And they're doing more work for not much, not any more pay. And so it's kind of one of those things where it's like, okay, yeah, this is our first step, but we got to get there. It's a short-term problem. The Public Safety Center, aka Cop City, is open. It's being utilized. So the 24/7 security due to protests is, is winding down. It is not just 100% that. It's also overtime for officers because we're at a officer shortage in the city as well. We're not at our peak capability.
To which they would argue, well, now having the public safety facility should, should bolster recruitment, right?
Yeah. Yeah. But so hopefully, it's a short-term thing. You know, obviously, economic factors come into play as well, you know, depending on what happens with the economy, with the federal government. It impacts, like you mentioned, grants aren't getting put out there. The city's affected by that as well. There are grants that the city has gone after that we're not getting. Then you also look at our friends that work at the CDC who now have been laid off and that kind of thing. And it's, it's cyclical. Hopefully, it's a short-term for us, and it's this one year. We have to kind of pinch pennies in the city. The other thing is that we've watched this city council kind of have a rampant checkbook too for years, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And it's just been spending like crazy.
Yeah. And, and so it's like, oh, this feel-good project get done. This, that feel-good project get done. Now we have to really prioritize. And sadly, there are going to be things that have to get cut. And that's usually things that are not core services. Trash is still going to get picked up. Police officers are still going to get paid. But then some of the arts start getting cut and that kind of stuff. And that, that sucks because those avenues, you know, part of my thing with, with public safety is a holistic approach. We have to retain and attract the best officers in the country. We have to train them. And that means with cultural and racial sensitivity training, how to spot mental illness training. But we also need to expand services. I'm a big advocate for 311 and PAD. But it's Monday through Friday, business hours.
Yeah.
That doesn't work. Homelessness and there are issues that come along with that are 24/7. So, you know, one of my big things is I would be pushing for expansion of the 311 and PAD services to address those kinds of things because then that relieves the officers to go fight real crime. But again, that's, needs more money. And you've got a, you've got to pinch pennies somewhere.
Well, and you know, this is something that, that came up, I think, with defund. A lot of people thought, you know, defund, defund the police meant a cutback in police services when actually what I think, and it was a misnomer, and somehow the, the misnomer took off.
Right.
The, the idea being that there should be some funding for some of those extraneous services that you spoke of that aren't cops walking the beat or patrolling. It's about mental health and having mental health professionals showing up at the door instead of cops with guns on their, on their hips.
Right.
I'm thinking of a, of a bill that didn't make its way through the General Assembly, but really sort of pissed me off as a resident of a major city. There was an Athens Republican, his name eludes me, it'll come to me later, who proposed giving residents of a city, this, I mean, just any city, I don't know which one came to mind, of a city that didn't handle its homelessness or panhandling in a way, I guess, satisfactory to the homeowner, to seek a rebate for public, you know, for their, for their property tax if it somehow affected their, you know, property value. I don't really know how they were going to calculate all that. But it seemed like it was a, it was a shot at Atlanta.
Oh, without a doubt.
For not addressing homelessness. And to me, it just.
You don't have a lot of homeless people in Milton.
Well, yeah, right.
You know, so.
But also, it, it just didn't make a whole lot of sense to say, well, we're going to take money from you if you don't address homelessness when you clearly already don't have the money to address homelessness with the money you have already.
Right.
But that speaks a little bit to the, to the Georgia versus Atlanta, or Atlanta versus the rest of the Georgia relationship that has long existed since, well, let's be honest, White Fly, Civil Rights Movement, et cetera, et cetera.
Absolutely.
Is there, how, I know, and I know you're just, you're just seeking to be one city councilman on a seat full of city council people. How do we mend that? How do we make that better? It seems as if, I would say, outside looking in, that Mayor Andre Dickens has a friendly relationship with conservatives at the state level. Is, is that, is that something that can be built upon in a meaningful way while also pushing back on the mayor when, when necessary?
Yeah, I think absolutely. And I think that's one key factor that the, that the city of Atlanta has struggled with. Like you've said, it's, it's very much been, Atlanta wants this, what's the rest of the state want? Not, Atlanta wants this, how does it also benefit the rest of the state? You know, you look at MARTA, for example, it's not a state-funded program.
At all.
It's funded by three counties.
Yep.
So, yes, you know, we left it up to the voters of Cobb and Gwinnett whether to, to join it, many times, and they voted it down. Well, at some point, we've got to start looking at, okay, well, residents of Cobb and Gwinnett, when you're coming into the city, what does that mean? You know, you can't just hop on MARTA because you want to go to the United game. You can't just hop on MARTA because you're going to the airport. There's got to be penalties for that because this is a, a residence of Fulton de Cab and Clayton paying for this.
So should there be a reduced rate, you think, or, or just a certain rate for the three-county residents versus everyone else when they're riding MARTA?
I think something. We've got to look at it that way. And then maybe that's when the state says, and I'm not saying, you know, use the stick all the time. There's got to be carrots with it as well. But, you know, to get back to your question about the relationship with the state, it's having those connections. And it can't just be the mayor. It can't just[1799.82] It can't just be the mayor.
Although he is on the Atlanta Regional, he's the chair of the Atlanta Regional Commission.
Yeah, and he's got a good relationship, but also the people on the Atlanta Regional Commission are not the people who are going to be voting every day in the state legislature for these bills that come up. So it's building those relationships outside of just the city of Atlanta and as an at-large seat representing the entire city, not just one district, that's a key role. And I think that's a, you can walk hand in hand with the mayor on those kinds of things. So it's not just him at the ARC, it's him also being able to have surrogates going to the state capitol and that kind of stuff to talk to legislatures from, you know, South Georgia and Statesboro and those kinds of things to get them to see how issues in Atlanta affect them.
And I've been saying for the longest time, you know, Atlanta having the world's busiest airport and, you know, connectivity to that for the rest of the state is so vital. And yet I feel like we're stuck in the 1960s with this mentality that, well, I've got to get on a plane from Augusta to get to Atlanta or a plane from Savannah to get to Atlanta. And you know, I don't know, like I'm, I'm a big fan of Jason Estevez, who's-
Yeah, just announced he's running for governor.
He's going to run for governor. And I want to, what I want to hear from the person that's going to run for governor for my party is connecting the state to the city.
Yeah.
And you know, thinking big, you know, we don't do big things anymore, but I think we need to start thinking big about connecting the rest of the state to the city with some sort of, you know, you know, high-speed or moderate speed rail or something that connects-
And there is a proposal.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is a proposal out there to do just that. You know, it's kind of a one-track right now and it's-
It's like what, Charlotte to Atlanta, right? Or no, no, you're thinking Savannah to Atlanta.
Savannah to Atlanta, yeah.
Which can connect Macon.
Yeah, you could, there's, there can be stops within there, you know, it doesn't have to be that. But again, it's, it's dreaming big and making them happen. We've, we've seen time after time after time where we've dreamed big here in Atlanta and in the state and it just not happened. When we won at the Olympics, we dreamed big and we made that happen.
Boy, what a huge miss though, when it, you speak of the Olympics, that mass transit-
Why didn't we expand transit then?
That's, that to me would have been the opportunity to convince the state, eh? You want in on this? Because we need, you know, this is good for everybody.
You know what, Gwinnett, you have Olympic sites in your county. We can connect you. So you don't have these people sitting on your roads, but that, that's, time has come and gone now. We're 30 years past that. And so now we've got to be innovative and we've got to work with the state to get these funding of projects done because it does. It's so crazy to me that we run the world's busiest airport very efficiently.
Yeah.
For the most part. I mean, yes, out of towners, they don't think so, but for us locals, typically we all know how to get in and out of the airport pretty quick.
Yeah, we know that plane swing like the back of our hand, man.
Exactly. You know, we don't even have to hold on sometimes. So, but you know, we run an efficient airport, but why are the rest of our services not like that?
Yeah.
We don't invest in it. We invest in the airport.
Thousand percent. You know, something else that, and this, this is, this goes back to you and I both working, you know, on the local softball league board. This is something else that I think that I don't see Atlanta really investing in and that's sports tourism. I mean, obviously they think about, you know, the FIFA World Cup coming in 2026 or Super Bowls or college football playoffs.
Shiny objects.
Those are big things. But you know, when, when, when our league is looking to host a tournament, which we do every Memorial Day weekend, we have to take our business to Villarica, Conyers, and now we can't even go to the south side because they're doing something with the Braves Foundation, which I could go off on, but I won't. Sports tourism is a big miss. We, we, I don't know if you, did you go to the World Series in Columbus?
I did, yeah.
Like what a fantastic complex they have in the heart of Columbus, Ohio, for God's sakes.
And we're seeing our neighboring localities build these things. We're seeing big complexes, you know, they're not big revenue generators, that's the hard part. And to have that kind of-
No, but they put heads in beds and butts in hotel and restaurants.
They do, and that adds hotel motel tax dollars, that adds infrastructure to be other projects. You know, there's so many things that it's, we talk about it all the time, the, you know, college football championship being in Atlanta, the number, the amount of money generated for the city. These are great projects. It's a one-day thing, right? You have a sports league, whether it's a softball league or a volleyball, the Georgia World Congress Center actually does get quite a few large-scale indoor sports events like volleyball, cheerleading, all these kinds of things.
Oh, God, the cheerleaders take over like three or four times a year.
They take over, right? But again, it's, it's a state facility.
Yeah.
So, but we benefit from the hotels they book. So yeah, I agree with you. We got to, we've got to think big. Where can we, and it's, it's not so even much about bringing in huge events like that. We don't have a lot of park space that has dedicated sports fields.
Yeah.
You know, you look at soccer, they throw one up next to a MARTA station here or there. There's so many opportunities that we have to reinvest our money into youth and that goes back to public safety. Getting them out from walking around the neighborhood and into an organization. I applaud the mayor's office for bringing on their esports and gaming youth centers. That's, that's getting movement. It gets kids involved in something. It stops them from being just in their front yard recruited by, you know, some bad, bad elements and that kind of stuff. So those kinds of things build on each other and having facilities where we can do that and have, you know, a, you and I have been at tournaments in their neighborhoods, all these people flood in to play, you know, a softball league tournament and neighbors come out and they're like, wow, this is cool.
Yeah.
And it's that connection to something and they see it.
Come on, you know, you and I both know it's the food trucks. It's, it's the smell from the food trucks that are bringing them in. We're with Matt Rinker, running for city council at large here in the city of Atlanta. Going to take a quick break and wrap this up. It's the Ron Show, America One Radio, progressive voices via tune in. All right, final eight minutes or so. We're with Matt Rinker, running for the at-large Atlanta City Council spot that's currently held by Michael Julian Bond, who has been in office for a minute.
Quite a few.
Yeah. We're running into a 2025 election cycle, which you mentioned is going to be a low turnout cycle. I happen to agree with that. It's why I spend a little bit of time talking about the Public Service Commission races because that is the sort of thing that like, it's great, thank you Governor Kemp for giving us another little tax rebate, but Georgia power's coming for that and then some. So you know, run for your, you know, dive into your Public Service Commission races, that's going to be an important one that's actually going to impact your wallet, impact your checkbook. We were talking about the, the city of Atlanta are looking to run a little bit, little bit of a budget deficit and obviously they're looking to cut services versus raising taxes. Are there creative ways for the city to bolster its revenue however?
Yeah, I mean, it is partly like we were talking about just a minute ago, bringing in big events that add into the tax coffers. It's also streamlining services in the city government. It doesn't necessarily mean cutting jobs, but where can we work more efficiently? You know, where, where can this service be, do we need recycling every week? Can that be in every other week?
Oh, no, 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 no. Don't, don't talk about that in my building because I'm going to tell you something, we need recycling twice a week.
Well, here's the difference though. Your building is probably outsourcing their trash to a private vendor.
Probably, I have no idea.
Because most multifamily buildings have to do that. So, but you know, it's taking looks at a holistic look at every service that we provide and is it being run efficiently? You know, can we alternate recycling one week with composting so that we don't have to have as many bulk pickups? You know, those kinds of things. So it's looking, you know, and I'm not saying that there's one, oh, that's going to solve all of our problems. It's really kind of taking a look at where we are working right now, how we can make it more efficient and where can we reduce the waste when needed.
So the pushback on diversity, equity and inclusion has come from the top-down White House on down. The city of Atlanta obviously is a diverse city that strives for equity and inclusion.
Yeah, we have the worst income-
Yeah.
-equitability in the country.
Yeah.
We're one of, we're the 50th ranked in the, in the state.
Yeah.
So you know, that, that's, we, we can pride ourselves, but if we don't walk the walk, we're not doing anything about it. And part of that goes back to the ability to move around the city.
Yeah, yeah, because owning a car, having a car-
That's if you have the money to do it.
Car insurance, yeah, I mean, that, that all adds up too. And that's where, you know, the, the transit part comes in. Getting back to the, to the DEI situation, the city of Atlanta has its policies and there seems to be some concern that having policies, speaking to DEI, could cost the city money at the federal level. If you're on city council and something like that comes up, where do you side? Because you got to think fiscal, but you also got to think ideological.
Yeah, you have to have the money. Yeah, you have to have the money to run the government, right? You have to have the money to provide the services for residents.
Well, I mean, you saw that there's a little bit of pushback. We saw this at the Caters City Schools, you know, we had one protester who was actually, not really a protester, she just, she just called them cowards and was called off by cops.
Yeah. I think if it's in your core belief, if, if we as a city have a core belief that being diverse, truly making the city equitable and including all of our residents, if that's our core belief, you stand up for it. I'm a diehard Democrat, as many people in this city are. My gut tells me that this is a two-year problem. I'm going to work my ass off in order to make sure it's a two-year problem and that we get Democrats to take back over the senate and the house to start pushing back. I think we've watched the Democrats have a little bit of a come to Jesus on what do we do now?
Yeah.
And we haven't quite figured that out.